I'll order the meeting of the senior masterful planning board. There's a quorum present. Some of the perceived board's business. Sean.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Board, as you can see, we have two sets of minutes that we need to approve tonight. We need to approve the November the 12 minutes. Well, we had a special planning board meeting that I for the virtual reserve subdivision. Then we also need to approve the January 6, 2025 minutes. That we had the special planning board meeting for the hearing, not here for the conditional rezoning and the rezoning that afternoon. Both of them have been presented in your packets. If the board is okay with them, then I would just need y'all to make a motion to approve both and the chairman can sign them this evening.
The minutes have been distributed to the board. I assume they've read as a motion, both be accepted. Have a motion second. Just move to seconds. Mr. Strickland has made the motion. All in favor to say aye. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, as you can see in your packets, we get sent out the 2025 proposed calendar. We just need a motion for the board to accept that. As you guys and ladies know, we do meet as an as needed board. So of course those dates are on the calendar if we need to meet. But if we don't have no business before the planning board, then we won't meet and we'll just meet till we have business again.
Yes, sir.
So we did a motion to accept the calendar.
The calendar has been stripped to all months dated since December, which is marked that we do not have a meeting unless it's a special one. But if motion to counter be accepted as presented. I make a motion to accept. Motion is second. Mr. Harper, Mr. Strickland, all in favor to say aye. Motion passes.
Yes, sir. Our next item we have, Mr. Chairman, as you know, when I was special call meeting we had back on January the 6th. We had this discussion in there and as we told you that night, town manager and myself have found, town manager, ladies and myself have found that the planning board duties were not in the Chapter 18 Land Use Code for the Town Ordinances.
Yes, sir.
We thought right now would be a good time to add this in just in case anybody wanting to question what the duties of a planning board member were. They were, if you look for our board adjustment, our MSD board and our tree board, the duties for that board is in there, but not the planning board. So what we would need to do, Mr. Chairman, was I believe the board did review over it at the last meeting. Open up the public hearing to see if anybody has any comments or concerns they'd like to mention to the planning board before we move on with these adopt those orders sent to the town council.
Yes, sir. You're correct. That was discussed among the planning board at our last meeting. Board's comments were made. I'll open up the public hearing now at this time. Any comments about the duties of the planning board being written and distributed? Having no one come forward, I close the public hearing.
Planning board members, or if you are in agreement with these ordinances that were brought before you to add this into our land use plan of the town general ordinance, we just need a motion from the planning board and our chairman tonight can sign the statement consistently. We will take this to our February 4th town council meeting if the board approves it. If not, then we'll wait to the next meeting to come back and look at it again.
Orders are signed off the board. Is there a motion? This be forwarded to council. Mr. Thomas made a motion. Mr. Evans has seconded. All in favor to say aye. Please take that to the council with our unanimous consent.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, our next thing on the agenda tonight is the rezoning of 7.3 acres off of Red Oak Road. We have the team for UNC Medical here, Jason Brand. We also have Laura here and Laura, please forgive me, I just slipped, your last name just slipped my mind that fast. Laura Holloman. The teams here for UNC Medical, Mr. Chairman, I will go through the agenda staff report. Then I will let you all get the public hearing where the teams of UNC Medical can come here to speak to the board, entertain any questions that y'all may have. Then we'll open it up for the general public, sir. If you look in your staff report, this application was submitted by Jason Brand for UNC Medical. The property owner of the property right now is 3MR Limited Partnership. Attention date Rose, Mr. Rose owns the property. We will go through the questions on the next page because they have already submitted a question for answers. And if you look on your first page of the staff report, right behind the proposed site plan they sent. You can see that north of this land is A1 Residential. The other south is A1 with half of it in the town of Nashville. Zone jurisdiction, the other half in Nash County. A1 to the east and to the west, A1, O9, and B1. The west is heading back towards the town in the bypass bridge. The existing zoning is A1 agricultural. The A1 district is defined as one to provide land for future development while permitted. Continue agricultural use until such time that development is appropriate. The proposed zone they asked for is B1. The B1 zoning district is valid as a certain commercial area which provides a wide selection of convenience and comfort. Comes to shopping center, furniture showrooms for personal service, normally arranged for retail facilities, parking, other amenities. This district is customary located at intersection of waterway highways or low major thoroughfares. This district may also provide retail and personal services for the benefit of residents in nearby areas and non-residents. Included are certain buffs such as warehousing, retail professional space, restaurants, office and hotels. And this is in a highway service district. It will buy future revenues also. In a B1 zoning district, I thought it would make use for the planning board tonight. I think this is what you guys kind of like want to see moving forward is what's everything that can be done in the B1 zoning district. If you look down, every use that our table allow use has been listed. If it has an S U P behind it, such as theater outdoors, of course you have to get a specialty permit provided by the board of adjustment. Same thing for race facility, indoor outdoor racetrack. You have to get that by the board of adjustment. So items do have additional standards that we have to meet the town ordinance and some are permitted by outright. If we go to our next page, description of such a property is 7.3 acre undeveloped tract of land owned by 3MR Limited Partnership. It has road fronts off Red Oak Road in Nashville, primarily in agricultural one zoning district, A1, within the town Nashville ETJ. The property does fall in the town Nashville zoning jurisdiction where the developer wants to develop the other portion that falls in town ETJ. The Red Oak separates. So with this property being split by the roadway, UNC wants to develop on the left side of seven acres. But also the owner of the property asked if the portion that's in the ETJ, if you look at the map right here where it cuts off it, if that also could be rezoned to B1 with this. Business has the same parcel number, pin number. The road just divides the land. We said there'll be no problem. So you wouldn't have to do two different cases. Our project history that is on the page with soil map up there, as you can see, we did put the soil map because the developer is thinking about using a private offset offsite wastewater treatment with septic system. So we did provide soil map showing you guys that soil does have Georgia Veil loom, 25% slope. Pretty much I have not been in the septic business a long time, but I think that type of soil will perk. And our developer did provide us in up there at your station, a soil scientist information showing that the soil could pour per for a septic system. Our project history, UNC Medical, soon as the advocate requests to rezon the above said location. The rezoning application was received on December the 3rd, 2024. Currently awarded sewer service provided by the town are not at the current location. The developer at the principal will utilize a private well water system for the property. The developer can service the medical office with a private on-site septic system. Halls and owners associates did provide that soil science report for us. Of course, the well and septic permit will be issued by National Environmental Health Department after the advocate has met National County Environmental Health Department regulation for a permit issue. Ken Moore, Division 4, District 2. North Carolina Department of Transportation informed the town Nashville that no traffic study report was needed for this type of project. Public hearing notes were mailed out to approximately 23 property owners within a five hundred foot radius on December 30. The public hearing notice was posted on the town's website on December 30. The rezoning sign was posted on the property January the 9th. The photos taken place see below. After we get done with the project issue, you'll see that. Legal notice was advertised in Nashville grabbed on January 16, 23rd, and 30. We put a third date in being that there was a gap between us and the town council meeting to make sure we met the two week window for all both boards. Front door town hall posters on January 8th. Of course, the library in the Parker Recreation Center was posted on January 9th. This such property is not located in a floodplain area. Such property is located in the Stony Creek watershed, in upper Stony Creek sub watershed. Such property is located, is not located within the NCDQ water supply watershed. The town Nashville future land use map has this existing property classified as highway service. And as we stated earlier, highway service is what you're aiming for out of 64. You want these type of facilities coming in with B1. Reasonable is spot zoning, general rezoning request, RZ 202501 may be considered reasonable and in the public interest because the request is not spot zoning because such a property will be rezoned for agriculture use and developed for commercial use. Our future land use map has this property slated for development of such which is being designated as highway services. The town Nashville V1 zoning district is the most intensive for these type of uses. And the subject property is in harmony with the request since the property has road fronts on Red Oak Road, which is adjacent to Highway 64 east and west. Mr. Chairman, the planning board, we did not hold a TRC on this. Of course, the town holds TRCs after we have approved things and a site plan has been submitted. Staff recommendation, oh, that's right. Yes, sir. I forgot. Mr. Harper got to recuse himself on this one. For both. Before we read our staff recommendations, we will let you now open up the public hearing where you can ask the team from UNC to come up. They have provided a PowerPoint presentation to the town council, to the planning board this evening to let you guys know what they're planning on doing on this developer on the Red Oak Road. Mr. Chairman, I will yield to you the open of the hearing.
We open the public hearing, Mr. Harper.
I'm recusing myself from this conversation to my association with the public.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harper, you can remain up there. You can come out and cry. You choose. You just came. You remain. You just came up.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to open up the public hearing for a specific property on Red Oak Road.
Hi, good evening.
Good morning.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. Laura Holloman McGowan is joining me tonight is
Jason Brand, my vice president at UNC Health Nash.
And also Aaron Bolduc with DCI Project Manager.
Can we turn the volume up in, Mr. Lancer? Sean's will turn up. Give me just a minute. Sean's can turn the volume up.
It's like being in church. You gotta project.
If I do that, I turned it way up.
You're getting to square up.
Y'all can hear me better?
Outstanding. Outstanding.
Thank you. So I did prepare a presentation, but Mr. Lucas, Sean did a wonderful job. So I'll, I won't. I'll reiterate some points, but I'll, but I won't repeat anything. So if y'all can go to the next slide, please. Thanks. Thank you so much for your help. So as, as staff mentioned, this is the project site, a portion of the greater tract on Red Oak Road, 7.3 acres. We feel it's well suited. It's a wonderful location for a medical office building. It's got great accessibility to Red Oak Road, which is going to be, is setting up to be a thoroughfare with business uses as well as right there off of, off of 64. So as our site selection process goes, this was as close to perfect as we could get. This is the existing zoning, which, which staff also went through, A1 agricultural, which, you know, proves that if we wanted, we want to be in line with your comprehensive plan as well as allow for commercial uses, we've got to rezone. This is the future land use, which staff also went over. Again, I think staff did a wonderful job saying how our proposed rezoning is right in line with what you all want to see. This is, this sets up nicely for your viable commercial and professional uses right there situated at the intersections and at the interchanges of 64. And that's exactly what this facility will do. This is just, just the very conceptual plan of UNC, subject to change as we, if we were to to gain rezoning by the city and move forward with site plan. But what we're envisioning is about a 10,000 square foot medical office building. We're excited that we've situated this along Red Oak Road, has nice visibility for both the city and UNC. You want to see your professional services along, along the thoroughfare and adjacent to 64. You know, when folks are coming in, they don't want to have to search. And is this the right way to turn? We want to be able to see where the building is and it sets up nicely with no floodplain on the build, with no floodplain on site, but also sets up not having any disturbances. We've got a nice buffer between that floodplain offsite and where actually the disturbed area is with the building as well as the parking. Jason, if you wanted to add anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this definitely is part of the strategic plan for the UNC Health Nash. And as we continue to offer services for Nash County, again, the intent is to have eight additional, or eight total primary care providers in this location with a future expansion for urgent care. And so again, this definitely meets the need. We, we hope that we're, we're hiring doctors as fast as we can. And now we have to have a place to put them. So when this property is finished, we will be bringing in, I believe, two or three new doctors next summer. So there have been signed letters of intent and now we just have to have a place to put them once they, they get here in Nash County.
Have you suggested they live in Nashville?
Well, the, the truth is that's actually part of the recruitment is that if they want any of the benefits of recruitment to come to UNC Health Nash, then they have to live within the radius. So that, that is the intent for all of our providers to live here. So.
We like it.
So again, we're excited to be here and we're happy to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
I just answered, buddy.
I, I looked at the map. Oh, why not? But I failed you before we get here to look at it. This property immediately going under the overpass, bypass overpass, go past the traffic lights. There's a pond down in there. Does that property begin just beyond that pond? If you come right up to the pond?
I, I think that the way the, and again, you speak to me too. I think the pond is below arrows, the line. So that, that almost is just like a flood area. It's a kind of a drainage area from, I think, when they, they kind of put that exit in. But I believe it is lower than the property line that we're looking at for our tract.
So that wouldn't be feasible to be used as a retaining pond. You're gonna, you're gonna have to put in one. To the pond, a second one?
Yeah, so, yeah, you can, so the pond is right below property.
Okay. And this property in respect of the first house on the left, isn't it north on Red Oak Road, is the old Jordan home? Is it still, is it, your property still going to be going uphill to that house?
So it
Doesn't include that house?
It does not. So it's almost at the crest of that hill. So the, the way that, if you see it there on the, the houses, the white dot right below the, on the top of the tree line, another triangle. And so this property is, is right below that property. So that house is not included in this, in this property.
And you're playing on drilling wells for drinking water?
Yes, sir.
And sewer system?
Septic system, yes, sir.
I was just, the reason I was asking about the hill is, does not Nashville's wastewater system that goes to Rocky Mountain that follows along Stony Creek?
Yes.
Yeah, and the, the one point where the next connection is, there's one and an easement over there. And then there's a, a septic tie-in point or sewer tie-in point further up the road. It's like, I don't know if you can show it.
You can see it on the aerial photo there. It's the strip in the orange.
Right. It's right where that, that top orange strip that goes through the kind of open area. There's a tie-in point there.
So if, if complication should arise in years to come, would it be feasible to connect a wastewater from that area down to your, to your drainage body?
I would think so. Let me give a town ordinance that some of.
I don't know about feasibility. Physically, it's possible. Yes, very possible.
I'll ask the twist of that, Randy. Wasn't it required to survive?
Well, our ordinance says you have to be within 200 feet to be forced to connect. It's 700 feet.
That's a good reason.
Again, the hospital is not opposed to it just at this time with the, the time constraints and the, the cost associated with it. We, we just really need to get this project started with you guys' blessing and to be able to be ready next summer. So again, if the, if the county has future plans and that line is extended, then obviously there is, there's no issue from our side to connect to it. It's just their cost and expediency of finishing the project in a timely manner.
That's probably been a good place for UNC Hospital, wanting to build back in the sixties.
I saw that Ms. Moore DOT didn't require traffic study. Y'all going to be required to put in your own turn lane, being right there close, close to the intersection?
So we actually did complete, sorry, Aaron Bolduc with DCI.
I'm sorry.
Aaron Bolduc with DCI.
Thank you.
I'm a third party consultant that Nash has engaged for the construction and development of this project. And so we actually did go ahead and completed a GIA even though it was not required. And they recommended a left end and right end just based on the nature of the location and the hill for safety.
Good. I think I was probably wise to leave considering the speed limits when you come out of the county into that area.
Yeah, it changes next year.
Yeah.
It probably ended up reducing it back to 45 because it's gone to 45 until roll day.
I went out and looked at it this morning. I turned around right there at the old Jordan place and I've got just about nailed by somebody running up 70 coming in there into the county. You got my attention. I'll just say that. More questions from the board? Thank you all. Any more comments or additions from the public? Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name.
And could you please sign in after you get on top of the search so we can put the record of it? Yes, sir.
Right here?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Al Jordan. I'm the Jordan property and Mr. Strickland is talking about the little house. And the septic system runs through my property. That's me just north of what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna make you happy. I'm here to object to this. I would, I'd like to keep everything agriculture around there just for the record, but it sounded like I've already lost this. People are already talking about hooking up the water and sewer. I think it's already been decided. But for the record, I'm here against it. I'd love to keep my farm farmed. That's what I want to do in my lifetime. And I don't, I don't want Walmart and petty parking lots and overhead lights next to my farm. What else do you want me to say? I could go on with nothing, but I think you know where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir.
I think I've already lost. Because you're talking about hooking up the water and sewer.
Well, that was a comment about the future.
No, them sitting out here talking about it. I was eavesdropping. They're already talking about running lines and hooking up. I got it. I've lost. But for the record, I'm against it.
Yes, sir.
And the other side of the road too, if I got to come back and argue that, you want to rezone the other side. I have that common line all the way down, that blue line. Everything north of there is mine.
How many acres is that, Mr. Jordan?
Probably about 70 acres. Nothing against a doctor's office. I'm not against a doctor's office.
Not standing.
I'm pro doctor and doctor's office. I'm against rezoning agricultural to commercial.
Yes, sir.
Anything else I don't want to need to sign my name? Right here?
Yes, sir. Who owns the land on the intersection side? Is that DOT's land or y'all right up to DOT's land, Ms. Holland? Intersection going towards your property? Is that all state land?
Right here, Mr. Chairman?
It's owned by Swine Fest.
Swine Fest.
Oh, is that the Swine Fest land?
Yes, sir.
What are, what are they?
They are A1 zoning.
You know, kind of, well, they have agricultural commodity, you might know.
Let me, I gotta.
Okay, that's fine, Sean.
Yeah.
I think it's just vacant land. It's vacant land.
Mr. Joyner may know about the adjoining property.
Is that where Swine Fest is? Do you have the other side of that?
It's David Rose. David Rose is Swine Fest.
Is he really?
Yes.
Okay.
I know for a fact.
Okay.
I familiar with all that. I've lived and grew up.
Yes, sir.
Or is it Steve Newcomb?
He's Swine Fest too. So it's a different business thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
If we don't have Any more comments upon the public? Close the public hearing at this time?
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation tonight for the rezoning would be since the developer has met the requirements for rezoning and the subject property has proven that it will not be classified as spot zoning map amendments on the town Nashville atlas. I recommend approval of this rezoning from A1 agricultural one to business one since the town Nashville future land use map has this property slated for highway services. Now we have two motions on your packet. Please review over them before we vote. And for deliberation, the first one is if you want to approve zoning map amendment, then you would just need to read this one. The second one is for if you want to deny the zoning map amendment. Mr. Chairman, I'll yield back to you and the board for deliberation as most the map will be.
I got quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Just quick. Um, the property on the eastern side of the road, the entire, the entire property should be rezoned, is that correct?
This one right here, Mr. Evans.
Sean, I'm not sure if we can do that because we didn't send their notices for that. Just the seven, wasn't it?
So we're just talking about the part on the western side of the land, of the road? Let's see the, let's see the property goes all the way to you.
It would just be the portion that's in there, that's in the town limits.
Okay.
Let me take that.
Mr. Bartson, side of town.
Yes, sir.
So.
Sean, I think we need an application from 3MR for, for the other 37.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll hold on now for Mr. Rose, just have Mr. Rose submit an application on the zone for that.
The part, the parts on the, what, eastern side of the road?
Yes, sir. What we'll do is just rezon the seven acres that you will see submitted I page for.
So that's not being considered?
Right.
It is UNC land?
Yes, sir.
So what's the force? Is there approval with denial in both lanes in here? What is the pleasure of the board? Sean, is approval with conditions or like we have in many of these, approval with conditions or is it just approval or denial?
It's approval or denial, sir.
Very good. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
I made a motion to approve.
Mr. Evans made a motion to approve. I'll second. Strickland has a second there. So the motion would read that we move that town national planning board recommends approval of their zoning request, RZ 202501 to rezone the specified property to B1 business one for development of a medical center along the state with the planning assistance and reasonable and recommends and recommended for consideration to the town of Nashville Town Council. The planning assistance C and reasonable states in RZ 202501 is it is consistent with the recommendations of the 2021 town of Nashville comprehensive land use plan because the subject property is located in a designated agricultural area and rezoning the proposed parcel to business one where a medical center or consistent with commercial development anticipated by the plan for this area. All those in favor of that motion, stay aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Instead of medical center, could you go back and just say for the B1 zoning? So they won't say we get contract zoning?
One more time, please.
Instead of saying medical center, just go back and clarify just for business one for all lawful uses.
So we're going to strike that. So it should read from the period planned because the subject property is located in a designated agriculture area and rezoning the proposed parcel to business one is not, or is consistent with the commercial development anticipated by the plan for this area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. For all lawful uses. Yes, sir.
Okay. And the word land since one, it does not have a D on it. If you'll correct that place.
Yes, sir, I will.
All those in favor of the motions I've read as corrected, stay aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I do. Just for the fact from Mr. Joyner. And I, I understand what he's saying. And I don't want to hold back anything either, but Mr. Joyner, I've got a question.
He, he left.
He's come. He left. Okay. My question is that, well, his concern was that his land would be encrusted on in the event that he had, they had to tie in the septic. Is that right?
I don't recall him saying it. I think he said sewer fault line just ran through.
His issues, he feels like you have to maintain agriculture. He doesn't want to decide his agricultural land.
I got you.
That's not understood.
Well, I thought he, I thought he mentioned something about the tying into the
He did.
Okay.
He was saying
That wouldn't encruch on his property.
No, because I fault line runs through his property and they'll have to get easement to cut through another property to get to it.
But it's not his, from his district.
Okay, all right. It's my misunderstanding.
No, sir. No, sir. I I think, and I stand for being corrected, I think what he was saying was he thought, in his opinion, this is already signed because he heard a conversation where there was a discussion of future tie-in, but I've never heard anything about it being on his land, and I think what was seen there is not his land.
Okay, maybe it's maybe I just misunderstood then. Okay, I'm I'm good.
You're fine.
Yes, sir, I'm good with it.
Uh, you you want to change your vote or you want to stand in objection?
I'll change it.
Okay. I'll take the motion again with Mr. Thomas's comments and clarification. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous consent. This to go to council is read.
Mr. Chairman, our next thing we have on the agenda tonight is Cardinal Woods Phase two and three have submitted a final flat. We do not have to do a public hearing on this.
Thank you.
We just have to look at this, and we'll let you guys know February the fourth will be Town Council night. Thank you. They have submitted a final flat for review of the Plating Board so that we can take this final flat review to the second council meeting in February, which will be on the nineteenth at nine AM on that Wednesday morning. Final flat twenty twenty-five oh one is the approval of Phase two and three of Cardinal Woods Subdivision off Global Park Memorial Drive, Parkside Drive, Center View Drive, Pond Overlook Drive. The zoning district is ML multifamily and RT residential ten. It consists of sixty-seven point five eight acres when they first started. Right now, they are proposing in Phase two, sixty-seven lots, Phase three, sixty-seven lots, Phase two opens space fifty-five thousand three hundred sixty-seven square feet, equivalent to one point two acres, Phase three opens space fifty-five thousand three hundred eighty-seven square feet, equivalent to one point two seven acres. The property is not located, the property is located in WSIVNW Watershed District, property is located in Tar River Reservoir, Tar River, Lonely Savinaw Creek Watershed, and Phase two and Phase three will be connected to Town Nashville water and sewer supply as Phase one was. If you look at your map, this is the area that they're looking at doing in Phase two and Phase three. And for the sake of time, we will not go through the entire submission of what you have to submit to the Plating Board to be on the agenda for a final flat approval, but they have met everything the town has asked for in our ordinance of standards to be able to submit a final flat to come before the Plating Board. Mr. Chairman, we do have the Cardinal Woods Subdivision representatives here, Lauren and Bob, they will be glad to address any questions that you may have about the final flat submission. I will turn it back over to you, sir, and if y'all have questions for them, they'll be glad to entertain those questions.
Is this considered a public hearing?
It is not. We have found out, our town clerk did some diligent work, find out that we do not have to do public hearings no more on final flat approvals.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
That's Page two of five, this is what I stressed to you earlier, I found it.
Yes, sir.
Page two of five. And and this may not be anything put up, but to the, we'll call, I I don't think it's north, to the top of the page, it says Phase two, it consider area is considered Phase, I'm sorry, top says Phase one, the middle of the page, two of five says Phase two, then bottom says Phase one again, is that a typo? I would go one, two, one.
I believe so. Let me let they yield it to Cardinal Woods to be glad to ask that question.
Lauren Granger with Ashton Woods, I'm the land development manager of this project. From what I recall, I'm not exactly sure what plan you are looking at, but there was a typo on one version where the phases were not correctly called out. Just for your purposes, the area, I guess it's in the middle.
Uh huh.
Um, that's Phase two.
Right.
Um, and then the remainder, so I guess the portion that, like you're looking at the map up there on the screen, the portion that's farthest to the west, that's Phase three.
Okay.
Like, looking at the map, it's like Phase one is a C.
Correct, yes.
And then Phase two points to B.
Yes.
So Phase two's in the middle, that's C?
Yes.
Isn't this incorrect then?
Okay.
But see, I do read my homework.
Yeah, I well, at some point, they were mislabeled. I think either it must have been Phase one or Phase three showed up for multiple phases,
Thank you. Mr. Strickland, I'm studying, I get.
Mr. Chairman, does the board have any more questions for town staff or for the developers?
I've been out there too much time to see y'all progressing quite well.
I I did have, I did have a question as far as public safety.
Yes, sir.
On this, is, I mean, the police department, fire department, are they growing along with all this growth?
They do have applications out right now for a police officer. I don't know how many it is for one or two, but they do have, they are trying to grow in. We do have Station Two still under construction, and Fire Chief has hired some new guys on, they'll buy with the fire department down here.
Okay, so they all have to be trained and?
Yes, sir.
Well, Nashville normally, they they hire people that are already certified, right?
Right.
Well, I'll do it too, but I think you're too old.
No, I don't want to do that. Thank you, though, I appreciate it.
I knew you when you did that, you were pretty good, I think y'all could come back.
Well, like I said, I'm I'm done. But yeah, that's, I mean, that 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 is a concern of mine. And knowing that the response times and all these all these people, influx of people that we have, it is a concern for me. But just pray everything's going to work out, and I'm sure it will.
This does not pertain to Cardinal Subdivision, but I want to speak on the fire department. I do have twenty-one years invested at the volunteer program.
Yes, sir.
And I was actually the last non-compensated volunteer fire chief for about five, I was seated after the tech pass, and then after that, we had several that were compensated and then had full time, three or four since then. But Nashville, Nashville, the Town of Nashville is truly blessed with the leadership and the farmer, the volunteers, as well as the tayden, which the Town of Nashville and Newton Valley Fire District is truly blessed with the quality of the fire service that has been provided over the past forty years. We were the first full volunteer fire department, if I remember correctly, it was the first full volunteer fire department to reach a Class Four fire insurance rating. Now, those who don't know about class insurance rating is, the law, the number is, the better qualified and prepared you are to fight the fire. The Department of Insurance of North Carolina, they come in and they test, talk us maybe every five or six years or whatever, but we were the first ones to reach level four. And there's some others in our area that are level four now, but it's it's it takes a lot of work, it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of training, and especially when you've got volunteers that are putting their time in it, we're blessed.
And that affects the insurance rate, I'll take.
It's valid out, you save money. Insurance companies will tell you that your insurance rates to protect your property is far less, the rates are far less in a low insurance rating than it is where people would say are eight or nine or so up the country, out the country for that people. But we are, we are, we're truly blessed, Town Nashville.
Well, thank you for your comments, appreciate your stuff, we will do. So I will, the more comments, I'll call for a motion then to to approve this or disapprove, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm looking for a hand.
So approve the final flat.
What's the motion?
To accept the final flat.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
So it's fine, no, sir, it's fine. Andy's made a motion to approve it, I have a second. Ross is second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passage now, sweep, for the business.
Mr. Chairman, that is it for tonight. Our next week will be February twenty-fifth, go ahead and consult that date in. We have one rezoning already that has applied, two pending right now. We have a conditional that's pending if they get in, if all the places in proper time, and we have another one that probably will be still submitted by next week.
Yes, sir. Any other business for the board?
Not that, sir.
Motion we adjourn. Mr. Lewis made a motion we adjourn. Ross second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're close.